The addition of the new zoning and land use categories further north than exist today could be seen as an encroaching into the neighborhood and on the single-family homes located along Van Buren Street. Staff feels the single-family residential nature of North Van Buren Street should be protected and upheld. Staff feels the commercial activity should remain as presently exist and be maintained south of B and along West Markham Street and not allowed to erode the neighborhood. Staff recommends denial of the request.
Thank you, Ms. James. I have five cards in favor and eight opposed, so just factor that into any comments you're making, and we will begin with the applicant. Ms. Nyswanger.
Do the people speaking in favor, when their time count against the 20 minutes of the applicant?
Yes.
Okay. Chairman and Commissioners, I'm Steve Nyswanger. I have the honor to speak on behalf of Ms. Kimmy Mincy today. And I also want to compliment the staff on the professional and courteous manner they've handled this thing, even though at the moment they are opposed to us. I want to tell you very briefly how we've come to you. In the spring of this year, Ms. Mincy had her salon right around the corner on West Markham Street. Whenever you do your tailgating before Razorback games, you always see her nail salon there. But her landlord decided that he wanted to sell that building to somebody and gave her 30 days' notice to quit. She couldn't get out in 30 days. She came to me, and we were able to negotiate something with the landlord to get her out by August 31st. Well, in the meantime, I told her, "You need to go find somewhere else." And so she looked around. She went down Van Buren Street, saw a house that kind of looked rundown, saw business to the north, saw business to the south, and thought, "I'll buy it." Well, in retrospect, she probably should have checked to make sure it was zoned properly. Honest mistake. She came to me and said, "Can you help me get this thing zoned so that I can operate my business out of here?" And I said, "It would be my honor." So here we are. Let me address the concerns of the staff. I think we're going to amend our application to clarify the nature of the business. I believe that the information that the staff has is not entirely accurate. It says the shop has four employees. The shop, and this is part of our amended application, will have one full-time employee, Ms. Mincy, and two part-time employees, and that is in our application, and that is what we're going to stick to. That's part of our application. It is not a full-service beauty salon. She doesn't do massages. There are no tanning beds in there. She doesn't do permanent makeup. There is absolutely no tattooing going on there. I think some of the neighbors think that it's going to be a tattoo parlor. That, we are amending our application to make sure that's clear. None of that stuff is going to take place here. The staff rightly is concerned about traffic, but let me tell you why I think their concern is misplaced. They're thinking there's going to be 40, 50 trips there per day. Well, under the information they had before I just amended the application, I can see why there might be 40 to 50 stops there a day. Ms. Mincy and her two part-time employees do buy appointment-only manicures, pedicures, and haircuts. So there's never going to be more than just a few people in there at any given time. In fact, we're amending the application to tell you that her customers come in by appointment only. This is how she operated around the corner on West Markham Street. And we're amending our application to make it clear because, again, I think although the staff's concerns are legitimate, when you understand what's really going on there, I think it mitigates that. Have I left something out? Hang on a second. There's one other thing I wanted to tell you. We're going to amend the application so that we're only going to have eight parking spaces instead of 10. We don't need 10 parking places. Ms. Mincy and her place do not need that many parking spaces, so that should begin to help alleviate the concerns of the property owner's group. And we're going to decrease our signage to 64 square feet to comply with the new Hillcrest requirements. That's all part of our amended application as we sit here today. And finally, I think there's some concern out there that, okay, so Ms. Mincy's there, but what, say, when she decides to move out, that somebody won't bring in a house of ill repute? Okay? Well, we want our application to pertain only to Ms. Mincy, and upon her vacation of this property, then the application, I mean, then our application would stipulate that this PCD application, should it get passed, it reverts back to R3, if that makes sense. Okay. Secondly, I think that the staff is rightly concerned about the encroachment on the neighborhood of businesses, but in this particular case, I think that concern is misplaced. I brought some pictures here for you. Whoops. And I hope everybody can see this. This is Ms. Mincy's house right here. And this is, I took that picture standing-
Ms. Nyswanger, can you use this mic so that they can, the folks can hear?
Oh, excellent. Okay. Would you also bring it in front?
Okay. How about that? Okay. I took this picture standing directly across the street from the-
Can you hear me now?
Yeah. Okay, this is Ms. Mincy's house. I took the picture from directly across the street. And then I pivoted to the right, to the north, and then you see this up here. There's a house, and then there's a business. And another couple blocks further, there is another business. That's to the north. And then if you pivot to the left, to the south, you see here's a house, a house, and another business. Now, I'm going to take you further. I'm going to zoom in on these pictures up north. I zoomed in with my little camera and took this shot, so you see now the place is called West. Then I went and walked in front of it, and you can see it's pretty colorful. I think it's attractive, but it is a business. And it's further north up the street. And that's what Ms. Kimmy saw when she was looking to buy the property. Now, I also, then I stood in front of her house, and I took a picture directly to the south. So you can see, she's pretty darned close to Markham right there. There's the lights of Markham, there's the stadium, there's the businesses right here and down here. And at about 3:30 a couple weeks ago, I was standing in front of her house, and the traffic was backed all the way up to her front area. The traffic there is pretty bad. And I would point out that the city did make some significant modifications to this street when it took Cavanaugh and made it go straight down. It's become a second, what did y'all call it, a secondary arterial way? At any rate, finally, I wanted to show you Commissioners that even further north is this antique shop. And just a few blocks to the south is this beauty salon. So the concerns about the neighborhood, although valid, are misplaced in this particular Now, the other thing I want you to know is her neighbor on 5101C, Daphne Puckett, gave me a letter today. And she was going to appear, but we're told that she was told by someone else she better not. So she wrote this letter for us. "To whom it may concern, this letter is concerning the property zoning in question. The house behind me has been vacant for the last three years. Because of this, crime in the alley behind my house has increased. Since Kimmy has moved in, the yard has been manicured and looks much better. The yard before this move was horrible, and there was constantly debris being put in my yard every time anyone came over to the house to work on it. The yard, for the first time in a long time, is starting to look nice." I read that as a vote in support, and this is her next-door neighbor. People who don't live within a stone's throw, who might object to it, probably don't know Ms. Kimmy as well as Daphne Puckett does. We have some other people that are going to speak here, but I want to- I want-
Well, then she knows you pretty well.
It does. There are some other letters that are in your packets. I've gotten some more today. I'm going to go over them very briefly because I want you to understand the kind of person that Kimmy is. If she was going to be my neighbor, I would be very happy because I know that she's a hard worker, and she's going to keep her place up. And in fact, her previous corporate neighbor, which is Steve Stevens of Stevens, Dillon Associates, here's a letter from him. "Kimmy Mincy has been our neighbor for the past eight years." Now, remember, this was where she used to be around the corner on West Markham. "She is a very dedicated and hard worker and respects to her business. As far as I know, she maintains a friendly working environment to her customers and her neighbors." Here's a letter from Carolyn Johnson, who's not here. We do have some women that are here. I'm not going to read their letters. "I have been a client for several years and believe the Hillcrest neighborhood benefits greatly from a nail and hair salon with the quality service that nails by Kimmy provides. For this reason, I respectfully request that a variance be considered to zone the new location for commercial use." Okay, so she doesn't know the difference between a variance and a PCD application, but she gets the gist. Here is one from Margaret Rainey, who works at Forest Place Apartments. "The owner of this business is very professional and above-board. I have received and appreciated her services for a period of over 13 years. I am the property manager at 1421 North University and work for Rector Phillips Morris. It is most convenient for me to travel to Ms. Mincy's new locale, just as it was the former location. Please see what you can do to instigate the city's giving her a variance in zoning so that she may continue to do business in her usual courteous manner of perfection, giving all of us the opportunity to have hands and nails and feet that are the best. Thank you for your continued support of this young lady." Here is a lady, Tammy Cumby, who knows about this area because she lives nearby, right?
She's also an engineer also.
And she's an engineer. Here's what she says. "I have been a customer of Kimmy's for about 14 years at three different salons in the Hillcrest area. Kimmy is an extremely hard and dedicated professional. Kimmy is the only full-time manicurist at her location. Kimmy schedules one client per hour, which allows her extra time to clean, and she runs a very healthy sanitary shop. Traffic or parking should never be an issue since at the most, there would be one client per hour. Kimmy was forced to move out of her old location when the owner decided to sell the property. I know that Kimmy recently purchased a house on Van Buren that had been abandoned for years and was an extreme eyesore to the neighborhood. Kimmy is working hard to clean up the yard, which was horrible, is trying to landscape via trimming bushes and trees to bring the property back to Hillcrest standards. I know there are numerous businesses within one to two blocks of Kimmy's new proposed location, and I am sure that she will help maintain and improve the aesthetic value of the property due to her love for the Hillcrest area." One last thing I want to say on behalf of Ms. Kimmy is that where she was formerly located, there would be cancer patients that would stay at that West Markham Inn. Well, they're back, she had several of them, and they've been looking for her because that's where they stay when they get their treatment. And they like to have their nails and their toenails done and their hair done. And they're looking for Ms. Kimmy. They can't find her. Please let her relocate just around the corner. And if any of you have any questions, I guess this is probably a good time.
Commissioners, anybody have any questions right now? Like I said, we have five other cards.
Yes, I better let them speak.
And if there's any time left over, we'll save it for you.
Thank you so much, Chairman. Thank you.
Ms. Nyswanger. Okay, first card in favor, Sarah Chastain.
Gentlemen, I just want to let you know I know nothing about planning and development. I'm a nurse by profession. I have been going to Kimmy's for more than 10 years, and I've been living in the Hillcrest area for, next week it'll be 34 years. There are several businesses in Hillcrest, in residential areas, and there are several homes in Hillcrest that look like this place did before she bought it. I cannot tell you how excited that I am that she has bought this property and is restoring the property and that she's going to move there. I do not want to give the impression that I'm biased towards her because I go there, although that is, you know, somewhat true. I just want you guys to know that there are many banks and buildings and all kinds of things that have gone up in Hillcrest that I'm not exactly happy about, but there's nothing I can do about it because it's a commercial property, and if you want to fix someplace like Kroger, try Hillcrest first.
Thank you, Ms. J- Sandra Tyndall.
Be brief, so I shall. I've been a resident of Hillcrest for 18 years. I've been a client of Kimmy's for eight. I did the math on that. That's over 200 appointments over eight years. And I want to tell you, she never missed a one, never rescheduled. She is a solid person. Also would like to tell you about the cancer patients. She comes in on Sunday to take care of them. She's that dedicated. She keeps one of the neatest, cleanest places that I've ever seen. She has a lot of pride, and I think we need her in the Hillcrest area. Someone might ask, would I want her as my neighbor? You bet I would. Of course, my neighbor parks two cars in the front yard, has no grass in the front, and grass that needs mowing in the back. And I live on Palm Street. I'd much rather have Kimmy. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Elizabeth Clark? Elizabeth Clark? Oh, sorry.
I live in Hillcrest, have lived in Hillcrest for the past decade. I've lived on C Street, one block away from Kimmy's new location, for the last three years. And I have a business on the corner of Markham and Harrison that I've had open for the last almost four years. And I've known Kimmy, oh God, about 22 years. As far as having Kimmy for a neighbor, I have absolutely no problem. I've got neighbors on my street that party till the wee hours of dawn, and Kimmy is certainly not going to be anything like that. When Kimmy was down the street from me, she was three doors down, never had a problem. Whenever I went into her business, you'd see maybe three customers, four customers if somebody was waiting, and you'd have maybe a maximum of five cars unless it was Razorback game. And as far as crime in our area, we have had problems with teenagers going through cars and a couple of teenagers getting into houses, but her business is certainly not going to raise the crime rate in the area. If anything, it's going to lower it. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next, Marcella Callahan.
I would just like for y'all to consider, Kimmy is a really hard-working person. I don't know of anybody who would dedicate their, her work is her life. And she runs a, when I'm there, and I've been going there probably about six years, I am the only person that's usually ever there. So there's not traffic. You know, there's a very, I mean, like, it's just, I don't see any traffic being a problem. And I think Kimmy should be, she's really working hard, she's dedicated, and I think it would be a plus to the community, especially for a minority business owner, to be in an area that is predominantly going, you know, has a lot of businesses up and down that street. And I think you need to consider, you know, what positive impact she puts to the community.
Thank you, ma'am. And finally, Becky Wieland.
Thanks for this opportunity. I'm so passionate about this right now, I'm about ready to cry, but Kimmy is going to set up a house there. It looks like a house. There was a piece of crap there for three years, and people are upset because, I'm not saying they're prejudiced, but we've got a hard-working black woman that's going to move into this community and make it look good. I go there, I'm a small business owner myself. This is a life-factoring decision here. She has every cent into this property, just like I have it in my business. And by God, you know, I would be proud, proud, to be next door to her because that property has improved immensely in just the short time she's been there. She's my sister in life, and I ask you to reconsider whatever was preconceived in your mind before we came in here because it would be a shame for this community to lose this person. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Those are all the cards we have in favor. I've got about eight in opposition, and we'll begin with Marcia Camp.
I can't tell you how delighted I am that that young man brought you pictures. He showed you why we can't have any more commercial in our neighborhood. I mean, the commercial that is there on up Van Buren, they've been there forever, I think probably before zoning was ever even an issue. I am concerned, number one, about property values. Commercial, when it begins to encroach on residential, can't do anything but take the property values down. On B Street and C Street and Lee, people are constantly working on their property to make it better. They're working on their yards. I would say, I've been out there three years, and I can't tell you how many houses have been rehabbed and completely changed. I'm concerned about that, but my primary concern is the crime in the area. I went to our crime watch Tuesday night. It was pretty frightening what all is going on out there. We're all watching each other's backs. I wouldn't want to be anywhere else than where I am, but because of our close proximity to Markham and Van Buren, there are people walking in our neighborhood all the time who are doing nothing but casing the houses. They know everybody's schedule, they know when everyone goes to work and gets home. So we're, I'm not going to say that we're crime-ridden, but we're darned close to it. I take my yard broom in the house with me when I'm working in the yard and have to go in for a drink of water. It's that bad. We cannot have, this would have to be called an attractive nuisance in that it will increase the interest of these petty thieves. The parking lot is a secluded parking lot on an alley. Our alley, these are houses that were built in the 1920s, and the, I have to call them hedge, I don't know what else to call them, are 25 and 30 feet tall. At one place, you have a tunnel in the alley, so it's very conducive to bad folks being there. If you have women coming and going, getting into and out of cars, boy, we're going to have people lined up out there waiting to snatch purses and stuff like that because they're already there, ready to have crimes against property. And I sent y'all information from the police department about the A Street, B Street, C Street, and there were 20 some odd over a 90-day period. I picked up the latest figures on Tuesday night, and there were, I think, 28. You know, I'm talking about a five-block-by-five-block area. I'm not talking about the whole Hillcrest area or anything, but, and the other ones who are here will tell you that too, but that's my primary concern. I think that this has gotten to be a matter of personality. We're not here to question personality. We're talking about property. And I am shocked out of my mind that someone would play the race card. That really surprised me. I didn't know till I got here that Kimmy was any shade but white. I have nothing against her. I don't doubt that she's good at what she does. That's not the issue. So I will turn it over to the other folks who will tell you about it.
Thank you, ma'am. Clint Davis.
I'd like you to have me. I'll be real brief. I live on B Street. I've lived there four years. I'm really going to defer to y'all's knowledge, the planning commission and the staff, about what should be done. Traffic is just terrible on Van Buren. It's a cut-through. We all know the issue there. The second is just preserving the neighborhood, and that's something that y'all need to answer. What we're going to do with Van Buren, is that going to be a commercial area? There's commercial areas on Markham, there's commercial areas on Cavanaugh, and is that just going to continue to be a commercial area? So me personally, I've read and I agree with the staff's decision, and I'm just a resident of the neighborhood. I live right there on B. You know, I could throw a baseball and, you know, and hit Van Buren, but I agree with them. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Brian Germany.
Hi, thanks for the opportunity to address you today. Kimmy and I have met, and she is a lovely lady and by all accounts, a good businesswoman. And I hope you gentlemen on the board here won't be unduly influenced by the lovely coiffed and manicured ladies in attendance today. I'd like to address that the amendment to the application really will have absolutely no bearing whatsoever. The fact of the matter is, we're still looking at a commercial enterprise, and my backyard, and I didn't get to see these pictures, my backyard butts directly into Ms. Mincy's backyard, where we have now a proposed 10, 11, eight-space parking lot. What is the drainage plan? Because for years, when the elderly gentleman owned that house behind me, the water used to run off into my yard. And then, you know, after a while, throwing dirt on the, you know, the problem, throwing some rocks down, you know, things got taken care of a little bit that way. There's a house on the corner now, big yellow house on B and Van Buren, that's now for sale for $389,000. Now, what would a commercial enterprise next door do to that homeowner's opportunity to sell that house at maybe a modest profit? Or would it encourage, if we allowed a commercial enterprise next door, someone to purchase that place and want to put in a parking lot? Because after all, Kimmy can, why can't I? Maybe it would raise the value of that property for another enterprise, maybe a restaurant, maybe a bar and grill, who knows? Traffic, it's horrible. People are cutting off of Lee Street, down Harrison, onto B Street to shortcut traffic when the ladies are leaving Mount St. Mary's, when their families are leaving Mount St. We have business encroachment, we sure do. West Designs was cited here as another business up the block. Yes, they're on the corner of Lee, or rather, Van Buren and C Street. That's in office use. They design interiors, interior decoration and things like that.
It's closed.
Oh, is it? Well, they don't have a parking lot next to them. They don't need one, apparently. Some of these places have been grandfathered in for quite some time. The Orthopedic Clinic around the corner. Most of the business enterprises have been restricted to the Markham Street-Van Buren area, and that's the way most of the residents I've talked to would like to have it. But Kimmy, I would like to welcome you as my neighbor, and I hope we can work something out for you that, you know, if you decide you want to stay in the neighborhood and live as a resident, I love you as a resident. We just, we don't want any business that close. Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Germany. Paula Lingo.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to the board. My husband and I have lived on the corner of B and North Van Buren for about 10 years now, and we've been working along fixing our little 1920s bungalow. And it's not much, to be honest with you, but it is what we have. And recently, when my husband retired, he was able to take the time to put up the white picket fence that I always wanted. This was a big deal for me. And now I'm really distressed to think that we're not going to be the last edge of neighborhood as we know it in Hillcrest, but we're going to have some more commercial encroachment. We've done very well, I think, to cope with the grandfathered already existing businesses there, and we all do that very well. But it's a busy street, as you know. It's a main route to the Heights as well as Hillcrest. So my concern is certainly not what Ms. Mincy's credentials are. I'm sure she's really great at what she does. I just really, really hope the board will deny any commercial use moving more up North Van Buren. I was a person who was in strong support of the recent overlay plan for Hillcrest, and I'd like to stay with the thought that that has provided for ways and means for people to have their businesses in a Hillcrest community without invading the absolute residential areas. We are actually on the block that has quite a bit of grandfathered commercial because we are southeast and diagonal to this property. I do take issue that it was a terrible falling-down mess. The gentleman, I think, passed three years ago, and the grandson's been trying to take care of it. It's appropriate that it be sold, and I think Ms. Mincy will probably really fix it up. But please not ask commercial. The traffic there is so bad that we've- The traffic there is so bad that we've actually had a victim resuscitated on our front porch before. It's not good there. We do the best we can with it. Everything backs up at the Lee Street light. Or, they're going the other way and racing for the West Markham light. So, I would hope that traffic's a concern, access and egress is a concern, and commercial use in a residential spot. And any proposal to use the alley for an access or egress, I think, is misguided. We all have an alley behind our houses for some personal access, but I do not believe that should be considered a viable way for any commercial customers to pass. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Scott Smith?
Chairman Stebbins, Commissioners, I'm Scott Smith. I'm the president of the Hillcrest Residents Association, and I think the last time I was here before you, the overlay district was in front of you. And as you well know, it passed. And I also will remind you, I'm an architect, and I do work in Hillcrest, and I'm already cussing it. So, I think it was a good document. It really is restraining what some of our clients are asking us to do. So, I got what I asked for. Relative to this that's in front of you today, the staff summed it up about as well as you can. It's a commercial island that's being inserted into our neighborhood. It has nothing to do with who owns the business. It has everything to do with the location. It's a very unusual piece of property in that clearly it was the backyard of what was the Queen Anne, that's now kind of a Victorian, and at some point was sold, and this white clappard structure was built there. The orientation of it, putting a parking lot in the back of it, really encroaches into the neighbors all the way around, not just those that are on Van Buren, on B and C. It really inserts that right into the middle, and the staff, I think, you know, as always, summarizes it well. So, I would ask that you deny this application, just it's at the wrong place in a neighborhood that we're really trying to protect and I think doing a pretty good job of it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Dolores LaComte? I apologize if I didn't say that right.
LaConte.
Dolores is my mother's name, so I got that one right.
I've lived on C Street for 12 years, and I'm acquainted with Ms. Kimmy, and I'm sure she is everything everybody says she is. Okay, my concern is changing the zoning from residential to mixed business. We can get into all kinds of trouble when we start messing with zoning. We could get an adult video store. We could get a hog rendering plant. Just anything could happen here. And so, that would be my biggest concern. Is there a way we can keep Kimmy and not change the zoning?
Question for staff.
Lawyer? Can we keep Kimmy and not change the zoning?
No.
No.
There you go. Ma'am, let's go ahead. Are those all of your comments?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. We're going to go ahead and listen to everybody that we can, real quick. Michael Thompson?
He had to leave.
He had to leave. All right. Ruth Bell?
We have a little air with the clock up there, so there's probably like five minutes left for the opposition.
Okay.
Okay, I'll talk fast. I'm Ruth Bell. I'm with the League of Women Voters of Pulaski County, and our concern about this is the fact that it is simply spot zoning in a residential neighborhood that wasn't so blooming 10 years ago, or even five years ago, but has come back tremendously west of Van Buren in the past five years. Usually, when you see a busy arterial as Van Buren is, in most cities, you look on one side and you see one type of residential area. You look on the other side, you see another type, often very different. But that's not the case. Somehow, the elements that make Hillcrest a success story, which I think are not truly totally understood, crossed Van Buren and continue and carry over all the way to university, actually, rolling along and making the neighborhood, the larger neighborhood, become ever more viable and livable. It would be a great injustice as well, as well as not good zoning at all, if you chose to approve this spot zoning. We would ask you to reject it. Thank you.
There are questions, Ms. Bell.
Yes, Mr. Leahy.
You know what it is. You're opposed to it here, but I remember some other cases with businesses in residential neighborhoods, it's more further away from business than it is. The league is supportive.
Oh, are you talking about family, children's home?
Any kind. I've heard any kind. That's main one, but there's a lot of others in there, too.
Well, I think that's our ongoing conversation, Troy.
Okay.
Okay.
We still like you.
Thank you, Ms. Bell. Those are all the cards we have in opposition. Would the applicant like to make any closing statements or comments?
Hi, I'm Kimberly Menzies. I'm the owner of Nails by Kimmy. And I want y'all to know, I've been in this area for 15 years, and I love this area. And they're talking about their backyards and all this stuff. We got so many ideas for that backyard, even stuff the city is supposed to fix, like the paving in the alleyway that's destroyed, you know, some of the trees that's overlapping. We want to get rid of all of that and make sure we do some nice things to that area. And I want my business to grow there, but I don't plan on having a party there. I want to clean that whole area up, because it was a mess. When I tell you that backyard was a jungle, it was a jungle. And even the architect, he saw it himself, it was horrible. And I've come a long way to clean up that area, so I can't understand why these people do not want me here, and they're voting against me. A lot of these people, I've seen walk past my business. All these people have never introduced their step to me, never spoke to me or anything. So, you know, I love this area, and I want to continue to stay in this area and do business, and I just hope you guys give me this opportunity.
How are you doing? I'm Barry Williams with Robertson Williams Associates, and I just would like to, as far as the zoning goes and spot zoning and things of that nature, it is a PCD. We need to keep that, as we all are aware. So, it will be limited to this use, and it can be limited to this owner. So, those are things that, it's not something where you're going to be rezoning the property forever to a commercial use. It's limited to Kimmy, and it would be limited to this use only, and the stipulations that are set up in the application, or the amended application.
The only thing that I would say is this, I heard some concerns about crime and the deterioration of the neighborhood. I can't think of a better deterrent to crime than to have a business with people there with these type of clientele, helping look out for the neighbors. These are your neighbors. This is your neighbor. These people can help look out for you. And that's, to me, would be a better benefit, and I'm out of time, sorry.
Well, you can go ahead and finish, Mr. Nuswenger.
Well, I was going to finish my sentence. I've been told by people who know a lot more about this area than me, that eventually that whole North Van Buren Street right there is going to be commercial. It may take 20 years. It may be a lot of fighting. I don't know. That's just what I've been told. I don't know how. I'm seeing shaking heads, okay. But I guess my point is this, there is going to be some change. Change is inevitable. And if you're, we've restricted this application so narrowly, and if you want to be able to pick and choose neighbors and change the way that it happens, this would be a good one. I don't know if that was persuasive or not, but thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Nuswenger. I'm sorry, sir, we're done with the comments. Commissioners, do you have any questions or comments? We'll start with Commissioner Allen.
I got a question from the staff. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. With the change and modification of our application, are you all leaning toward approving it, or are you still steadfast on your first decision?
Staff is still recommending denial of both the land use plan and the proposed PCD. In the end, it's a commercial use. Even with these amendments, it's still a commercial use in what we feel is an inappropriate location.
Okay. I guess my next question is, if the business, if this plan is approved, I don't see how this is going to increase the crime rate in the neighborhood. I think that some of the comments, and I appreciate your comments, but I think some of the comments were playing on the fears of neighbors and other people in the community. And I think whenever you have someone that's coming in trying to build a business, I think that sends a negative signal to other people in the community. And it seems to me that this community is polarized, some want it and some don't. And I guess it's the fear of the unknown, but I want to know what was there before she bought the building. Many of the people that are speaking against it made no effort to purchase it and resurrect it, rebuild it, and make it something. And so, when she got it, purchased the building, it appears that, purchased the home, it appears that it created some turmoil and some uproar in the community.
I can address that for you, sir.
Oh, that's not necessary.
Please, next. Ms. Menzies, were you planning to live in your, you are going to, she's going to live there?
No, sir.
You're not going to live there, so it's going to be strictly commercial.
It's going to be strictly commercial.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Leahy, do you have a question?
Ms. Menzies planned, and it's still part of her application, to live there. I think right now, because some of her neighbors have expressed some hostile feelings, she's expressing emotionally that she doesn't want to live there. But it's still part of her application. That was going to be where she lived and worked.
She just stated she wasn't going to. Thank you.
Well, I, I. Will you come back to the mic and explain yourself?
That's the reason why I said I wasn't going to live there, because of the nonsense that's going on around there. Just negativity.
Let me make a comment. If the Little Rock Nine had decided they were not going to go to Central High School, which set the tone for massive integration nationwide, somebody's got to be the first person to do something.
You're right.
Okay. Mr. Germany, Mr. Germany, you're out of order.
But this is what I'm dealing with, and I'm dealing with a lot right now.
Commissioners, any other questions? Mr. Meyer?
Just an observation, I really haven't heard anyone hostile towards you. I've only heard complimentary things said towards you and about your business. And I don't know how we've gotten off of it. I think there's been a lot of things said that are, you know, I don't think a small beauty shop like that's going to increase traffic, but at the same time, or crime, but to say that there's going to be no impact and that that strip's going to be commercial in 20 years is just as far off base. I mean, I think your attorney's done an admirable job presenting the case. I think you've done an admirable job presenting your case. And Fred had kind of touched on something that we've done before. When we've been in an area where there were a bunch of dilapidated houses, we've let things go in there because they would be a positive influence on the neighborhood. If this house sat there vacant for any appreciable period of time, it was because the owners wouldn't sell it. There's not a piece of property anywhere, there's very few for-sale signs. Properties are very hard to find in that neighborhood. If we let everyone open a business in their home, then all these commercial areas that we have, you won't be able to rent them out. And that's my, I've heard no one impugns your integrity or that they've been hostile as having you as a neighbor. I've heard none of that. But yeah, you've got, we've got eight or 10 parking spots, but they're double stacked. They're, you know, you're going to have to have four people park in front and then four people pull in behind. And it's just, it's just a bad layout. So, that's, that's all. There's just been a number of inaccuracies, and I just wanted to state my opinion, I guess because I get to.
Thank you, Commissioner Meyer. Commissioner Yates, and then we'll get to you. Commissioner, go ahead.
I'd like to say that, to me, this is very clear. It's a zoning issue. It's not about who the neighbor is, what color the neighbor is, or even what the business is. I know some of the folks that have spoken in favor of Nails by Kimmy and Ms. Menzies seems like a very lovely lady, but what it boils down to here is that this commission is a planning commission, not the, is the grass cut pretty commission, not is the backyard a jungle commission. It's planning and zoning. We are here to decide planning and zoning issues. And the issue in front of us is whether or not we want to vote for recommending to the city board the approval of a PDC, Plan Development Commercial. And I want everybody in the audience to understand that. That is, that is the issue here in front of us. And whether or not we like y'all as neighbors, whether or not we think you are running a fine business, whether or not the traffic may or may not increase, I really don't think that that's what we're talking about right here. We're talking about the use of the property. And so, I kind of want to settle everybody down on that and have a question for the applicant. My question, Ms. Menzies, is when you purchased this property, did anybody selling the property to you represent this as anything other than residential property? And if they did, I think maybe we might make sure that your attorney has their name.
I wasn't told that. I wasn't told that I could not do my business in that area. Because it was zoned in that area, I was told I could. Not zoned in that area, because it was other business in that area, I was told I could do business in that area.
Someone, when they sold you that property, some part, I don't need names right here, but somebody on that side, on the selling side.
Right, and said it shouldn't be any problem.
Suggested to you that this would be an appropriate place for a business.
Right. It shouldn't be any problem.
Okay. Well, I had curiosity about that. That doesn't change the issue in front of us, but I was curious about that. And touching on what Commissioner Meyer said, and it boils down to the primary reason why I cannot support this, is that there are, there's a multitude of other commercial opportunities within two or three blocks. You can go down to Markham Street. I was by there today. I saw two for-lease signs on Markham Street that would be maybe not as cute as this property, maybe not as, maybe a little more expensive, I don't know, but they'd be more, they'd be more appropriate. And same thing goes up on Kavanaugh. There are properties up there that are already zoned, that are for lease or for sale, that would be more appropriate. And that's the only reason that I cannot support this application.
Commissioner Leahy?
I can't add too much to that, other than I think this is a nice layout this lady has out here, but until, and everybody knows I've always been opposed to businesses, anything commercial in a residential area, except one, and until I can operate my business out of my home, then I'm going to be opposed to them.
Thank you, Commissioner Leahy. Commissioners, are there any other questions or comments? Now, we will vote on the items separately. We'll begin, we're going to have a motion on item 17, the Land Use Plan Amendment.
Chairman Stebbins, I move for the approval of item number 17, the Land Use Plan Amendment, including staff's recommendations and comments, except, well, all staff's comments, except for staff's recommendation for denial.
We have a motion and a second on item 17, the Land Use Plan Amendment. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign. Item 17 fails. Now entertain a motion on item 17.1.
Chairman Stebbins, I move for the approval of item 17.1 as amended by the applicant this evening to include that the application would be limited, one full-time employee, two part-time employees, the use of manicures, pedicures, and haircuts, eight parking spaces, sign of 64 square feet in sign of 64 square feet, and limited to the ownership and use by the applicant only. Uh, barring staff's recommendation for denial.
We have a motion and a second on item 17.1. Is there any further discussion? If not, all, all in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same sign.
Troy, I know how you feel now.
Um, the applicant does have the, uh, right to-
Right of appeal, yes.
To appeal that to the boards, that's correct?
Yes.
Um, all right. Well, that concludes all of our regular agenda items this evening. We appreciate your, uh, time and patience. We, uh, save some time at the end of every commission meeting for citizens' comments. If, uh, there's anyone here that would like to speak on an item not already heard tonight, we'll be happy to entertain that now.
And, and yes, it works.
If not, we are adjourned.